filing on Zoom, so bear with us a minute.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. My name is Jean-Louis Shara. I'm the mayor of Northampton, and I am serving tonight in my capacity as the city's cable license issuing authority under Mass General Law Chapter 166A. I want to welcome you all to the City of Northampton's public hearing on the city's Comcast cable license renewal. This hearing is to hear from you, the public and interested parties, to ascertain the community's cable-related needs. The hearing is being conducted both in person here at the senior center and over Zoom, the virtual meeting platform. Notice of this hearing was published in the local newspaper in two successive weeks, and the notice is also on the city's website. We have copies of the legal notice if anyone would like to see it. And the legal advertisements will be entered into the record as ascertainment hearings Exhibit 1 and 2, and the hearing is being recorded, and a tape or DVD of the hearing shall be ascertainment Exhibit 3. By way of background for the public, Comcast cable license expires on April 3, 2026. Federal and state law requires the holding of public ascertainment proceedings, including this hearing, to identify important local cable needs. Ultimately, these proceedings will result in either a renewal of the Comcast license or a denial of such renewal. We will receive comments and testimony about cable-related needs and interests, which are important to the public and interested persons, and about how Comcast has performed under the existing license. We welcome comments about all cable-related matters of interest to the public, including but not limited to customer service, license administration, institutional network needs, and the city's needs regarding the local studio and local programming that is very important to our community, and maintaining financial support for the city's local programming capabilities. Please, if you can, keep your comments to no longer than three minutes, and please state your name for the record. Any persons on Zoom who seek to comment can identify themselves by using the raise hand feature, which is under reactions. You may also email your comments to mayor@northamptonma.gov. We've already received many, many emails, and those will all be part of the record, and we will share those with Comcast. The process of ascertainment of community cable needs and interests will remain open until further notice, and so please keep the communications coming into us, and all of those will be, as I said, be part of the record and given to Comcast. So I want to thank Attorney Bill August for, he's here on Zoom. I also want to acknowledge some of the elected officials that are here, and excuse me if some of you have come on Zoom and I have not caught you while I was speaking, but we have the city councilors that are here in the room or on Zoom, or Counselor Alex Jarrett, Rachel Maori, Stan Bolton, and Garrick Perry, school committee members Michael Stein and Eileen Davis. So thank you to any elected officials that are here, and again, sorry if I missed anybody. Before hearing from the public, I'd like to welcome Comcast Representative Eileen Leahy, who is here to make some introductory comments if she would like.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eileen Leahy, and I'm a Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs for Comcast. My office is in Springfield, and I live in Holyoke, and that's where I grew up. I've served as your local representative for Comcast for over a decade now, and I've had the pleasure of working with the city on various issues. We've had a very good partnership with the city, and we look forward to fruitful negotiations and continued partnership with the city. Thank you so much.
And I'd also like a welcome comment from Al Williams, who's the Executive Director of Northampton Open Media. Welcome, Al.
Hello. Oh, hi, I'm Al Williams. I'm the Executive Director of Northampton Open Media. And, you know, just for information purposes, we as Northampton Open Media don't have a part in the negotiations. We don't sit down at the table. We are the result of the negotiations. We are the stewards and shepherds of what is created out of this negotiation, perhaps. And so, and also, you know, it's important to point out that we're not part of the city, and we're not part of the cable provider either, and that's intentional. Seventeen years ago, the cable provider was running the Community Media Center, and a group of citizens decided they didn't want that to be the case anymore, and that's how our iteration of Northampton Community Television and now Northampton Open Media started. Also, we're not part of the city, and the reason for that is that when people want to make content that is critical of the city, it's best that we are not part of the city. So that's why that is intentional as well. And so that's who we are. I just want to thank the city for hosting this process and for respecting it and for Comcast. You know, thank you to Comcast, because there's not a lot of industries that give a percentage of their income to community good. Even though it's required by law, they still do it, so I think they should be recognized for their part in that. And thank you for this entire community for showing up and for participating with us and participating in this process. Thanks.
Okay, I also want to thank Alan Wolf, who's Chief of Staff for the City of Northampton, for being here and helping out. And let's start hearing people's comments. So I'm, yes, if people want to sort of line up at the mic, that would be great. Well done. I'll alternate between people who are in the room and people on Zoom. So give it a tap. All right, wonderful.
Thank you.
So again, three minutes, and please state your name.
Devin Bruce. I just want to say that the Northampton Open Media does a really nice service interviewing all the candidates that run for office in the city. I think that's how most people figure out who they're going to vote for, and you do that for the full set of them. It's a really nice service to the city. And also, Al, you were really receptive to an idea of putting a school. We used to have city school, and I kind of dropped the ball on that. I'll blame it on the pandemic, but I appreciate your receptivity to the idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up on Zoom is Ben Spencer. You should be able to unmute.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Benjamin Spencer. I live in Northampton. I'm here to express my support for Northampton Open Media. The fact that I can be here from my house, just home from work, I wouldn't have been able to make the meeting, but I'm able to be here remotely is very beneficial, and I have absolutely been taking full advantage of the government video portion of the Northampton Open Media. It's been very helpful for me to get to understand better how our city government works over the past year. Having that archived from all of the different public meetings has really helped me get a greater appreciation of a lot of the hard work that our citizens do on those boards and committees. So I would have to say that this is an essential service that's been provided by Northampton Open Media, and I really appreciate it. Also, just want to point out how wonderful it is that they work in collaboration with Northampton High School with their media sources, equipment and everything. And also, when I was preparing to come to this meeting, I just was doing a little look at some of the other courses that are offered by Northampton Open Media, and they look excellent, and I hope to take some in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please, welcome.
Hello, my name is Alex Russo. I am the President of the Northampton Open Media Board Director, so forgive me, I'm very biased. I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of great things about NOM this evening, and I know we have to keep it brief, so I'm going to just focus on one point that I want to hit, which is to encourage the city to push in the negotiations to have a flat funding rate for Northampton Open Media rather than having it tied to the number of cable subscribers in the area. For those who don't know, Northampton Open Media is funded by Comcast through a percentage of cable subscribers, and as you may also have noticed, over the last decade plus, we've been seeing a lot of cord cutting. Now Comcast is still very prevalent in the community, offering internet access, and Northampton Open Media is just as present in the community as they have always been, partially because of the great foresight of people like Al in having them have a very strong web presence from day one. So people watch this content just as much online, maybe more so than on the cable channel. So, yeah, I just don't want to see their funding go down because of the diminishing cable watchers. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Yes. Next on Zoom is Counselor Alex Jarrett.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alex Jarrett. I'm the City Council President and Ward Five Counselor. I live in Florence. I'm speaking in support also of Northampton Open Media. They have done an amazing job of broadcasting, archiving our city council meetings, and that supports transparency and accessibility for everyone. Some of our meetings are very long, and their staff stays up with us and makes sure that we're able to be heard and seen live no matter the hour. And they also archive dozens of other boards and commissions, allowing anyone to refer back to any public meeting. And I use that extensively when I'm working with constituents. I'll say, here, queued up to here, here is a meeting that, here's the section of the meeting that you need to see. So very, very helpful. Also, their coverage of community events and the classes and equipment they offer to the community makes Northampton more accessible and equitable. So please make sure the new contract funds the full 5% operational funding plus capital funding. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stefan Ward Wheaton. I'm the Program Director for WRSI 939 The River. I'm also serving on the board for Valley Free Radio, our WXOJ, our community radio station, which is a partner for Northampton Open Media. I've had the opportunity to spend some time in community media in various roles over the last few years, and professionally as well as personally, and also serving just in a more general media capacity as, you know, my own career. And I can say that I think Northampton Open Media is a model not just for local public access media organizations, but nationally. And that is reflected by the coverage that we have gotten, this community has gotten, through the efforts of Northampton High School, through the transcript, which is a service made possible by Northampton Open Media, through the kind of the really excellent coverage, as other people have said, of committee and government meetings that provide accessibility to people who can't make it in person, and to the plethora of services provided, digital access services, training services for filmmakers, for content creators, a media-forward perspective that takes in not only traditional access, such as, you know, television and the internet even, but also Twitch, YouTube, media channels that are going to be and are now vital to our youth, to various, you know, various endeavors that we will want to take advantage of. And for that reason, in addition to everything that's already been said and probably will continue to be said throughout this meeting, I really feel that it is absolutely vital that we, this community, invests in Northampton Open Media for the future. And that is done through the full operational funding of 5% through this contract negotiation, which I fully encourage and support. And also, in a more general sense, I want to encourage as the media landscape changes and as subscriptions to our cable services change, that we invest in additional revenue streams to make sure that this service remains vital and growing. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on Zoom is RFCB. Please state your name.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ryan Chevers-Brown. I grew up in Leeds, Massachusetts, and I went to the high school back when Northampton Open Media was still in the basement of the high school. Northampton Open Media was an incredibly useful and just incredible organization to have available at the high school for access to their equipment, classes, tools, editing suite, studio, just all of the resources they had available were available to us high school students. They're not normally available to high school students interested in film and photography. I myself am a sports photographer. Working with Northampton Open Media really allowed me to foster that skill and that hobby to the point where I've now done it all through college, and I've been doing it for about eight years now. Additionally, Northampton Open Media helped the Northampton High School band go to Carnegie Hall back in 2018, I believe it was, by running a telethon. That's something we could not have done without their help, and their support was absolutely vital to helping us go there. As such, I am here to give the city as much oomph as I possibly can towards full operational funding, extra capital funding, flat funding figures, and also putting the channels in HD. I do still watch a significant amount of the government meetings and such and other Northampton Open Media content, and it would be great if the online, if the, I'm sorry, the cable channels were in HD. I personally would really appreciate that. With all that, thank you, and fund Northampton Open Media.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Bella LaVavie, and I am the Assistant Director of Greenfield Community Television, and I'm here to testify saying that Northampton Open Media is not only an credible resource to the Northampton community, but leaders in the region for public access. They promote collaboration and assist with anything all these other stations need. And they, whatever Northampton does, we follow suit across the region. So providing, or funding everything at the full levels, providing stable capital funding and converting channels to HD, which is really, really important for public access across the region. Doing this in Northampton would be a huge support for the rest of the region as well and make Northampton leaders in everything that's going on in public access.
Thanks so much for sharing. Okay, Indy Francis.
Hello. My name is Indy Francis. I live in West Hampton, and I'm calling in from the Northampton Community Music Center where I work. I'm an artist. I use video as one of my mediums, and I work here at the music center to document and archive the events that go on here, and I do that with the help of Northampton Open Media and their material resources. I also grew up in the area and went to the high school at the same time as Brian spoke earlier, and can speak to just the importance of having access to these really high-tech, highly high-quality educational and technological resources in the hands of young artists and documentarians. So I want to support the full 5% operational funding for Northampton Open Media, full capital funding of the Northampton Open Media Capitalist, and ensuring that that capital funding is a flat figure and not tied to subscriber numbers. I'd also like to request that all NOM TV channels be converted to HD, that the programming be listed in the electronic and online programming guides, and that additional funding be allocated if at all possible. Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much.
We passed around a sign-up sheet. If you all want to sit down, we'll use that so you don't have to stand if you prefer.
Good, Kelly.
Hello. My name is Kelly Silliman. I am the Co-Director of the Northampton Center for the Arts at 33 Holly and a resident of Northampton. For those who don't know, 33 Holly is a project of the Northampton Community Arts Trust, and programming in the building happens because of three resident organizations, the Center for the Arts, APE LTD, and Northampton Open Media. I have been working alongside the staff at NOM, I could say NOM, not NOM, for more than seven years now, since 33 Holly opened in 2017. And there's really no way to overstate the importance of what they offer the community, from equipment rentals and training to classes, projects and programs, and grants to independent filmmakers. Everything NOM offers is available for free to everyone in our community, and they're an invaluable resource. NOM has specifically supported the center over the years in numerous ways. They film and show our Youth Performance Festival, thank you Alexis, which was in a specially vital role during the pandemic. They loan us equipment and teach us how to use it, for instance, for our Stomping Grounds Dance Festival in the summer. They have gone above and beyond in being available for tech questions over the year, like really above and beyond. And they participate in building-wide events such as our Arts Night Out, presence or supporting the Doosie Do Parade. Their students at Northampton High School are impressively well-trained, and they've interviewed us and created news spots that we've been able to use for ongoing publicity. I really can't even begin to tell you the number of times we refer artists to them for various kinds of support. As an organization, they are here for the entire community, from fully-funded filmmakers to houseless independent documentarians with no budget whatsoever. And they are able to do all of this because of funding from Comcast. As someone who lives, both lives and works in Northampton, I am asking the city and Comcast to agree to full 5% operational funding for NOM and full capital funding of the NOM Capitalist. I'm asking you to ensure that capital funding is a flat figure, not tied to subscriber numbers. In addition, it's long past time for all NOM TV channels to be converted to HD, and it's important that NOM programming is listed in detail in the electronic and online program guide. And finally, Comcast, please come through with additional funding. While I understand that Northampton can't ask for additional compensation, the fact remains that Comcast makes significant revenue and benefits enormously in ways that are not reflected in this contract. I think Comcast should voluntarily find ways of providing additional funding to Northampton Open Media and recognizing it as an important public good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Bill Dwight.
Hi. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Bill Dwight. I'm a guy in a truck in a parking lot right now. I just want to, oh, no. Allen, hang on. This is like equipment failure. Am I there?
Yes.
Okay. Al's right. They're, they're not part of the city. They're actually, at what point, in fact, they are a critical asset of the city, however. They're essentially what I would qualify as our station of record. They're what we need and what we rely on for all the communications of government and all the community discussions and conversations that we, that we have. We've, and I would point out that since the pandemic, graphically illustrated the acute, critical nature of their services. We did, we not only took advantage of it, we relied on it. It was essential. We now find ourselves in a 10 years different from the last contract that we had, where circumstances were much different had, where circumstances were much different when we were negotiating during ascertainment. Although, however, some of the requests that Al Williams is asking for are carryovers from the previous years and previous contract negotiations. These are 10-year contracts, 10 years. Just think about what happened 10 years ago. I wouldn't be talking to you from a truck 10 years ago in a meeting. We didn't have a pandemic 10 years ago. We don't have cataclysmic climate change. All, just think 10 years into the future, if we don't subsidize adequately and appropriately this, this service that is now as critical as water, electricity, internet, and everything else that we tend to rely on, if we don't do it, there are consequences that are actually scary to think about. Our, our expansion of community participation in all governments and conversation has been enhanced considerably and to the point where we take it for granted. And that is all due to NOM, and I would ask that you continue to negotiate for, to maintain this robust service and to fund not only the services that they're requesting, but the staff that has been devoted to this community as much as anyone, and have provided us with the service, as I said, that we critically need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Natalie Ulrich, and then it looks like, just to give you a little lineup, Natalie Graves after, and then maybe Pam.
Hi, my name is Natalie Ulrich. I'm the Director of Development at Safe Passage, and I'm here to express my strong support for Northampton Open Media and to urge the city and Comcast to maintain and enhance their vital funding for this essential organization. Northampton Open Media services have been paramount to Safe Passage, Northampton's only domestic violence agency. During our largest event, the Hot Chocolate Run, we have people across the country tuning in to the livestream to support survivors of domestic violence, something we would never have been able to do without the support of Northampton Open Media. They graciously offer their time, equipment, and creativity at no cost to Safe Passage. Northampton Open Media's support expands the reach and impact of our work, as well as elevates the voices of survivors, helping us connect with more people and raise awareness about domestic violence in our community. Northampton Open Media provides invaluable services to local nonprofits. By offering affordable or complimentary media production, broadcasting, and live streaming support, Northampton Open Media allows organizations to share their missions and events with a wider audience. Nonprofits rely on NOM to amplify their voices, whether by promoting fundraising campaigns, providing live coverage of events, or producing educational content that raises awareness about issues that affect us all. This partnership fosters a stronger, more interconnected community where nonprofits can thrive and better serve their constituents. By supporting NOM, we are investing in the heart of our community by shining a light on the essential work of our local nonprofits and deepening their impact. For these reasons, I encourage the following considerations as part of the negotiations between the city and Comcast: maintaining the full 5% operational funding, full capital funding for the NOM Capitalist, flat capital funding not tied to subscriber numbers, HD conversion for all NOM TV channels, detailed program listings in electronic and online program guides, and additional funding from Comcast to address revenue challenges. Without this support, nonprofits can't continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Aileen Davis on Zoom. You're unmuted, Aileen.
Oh, thank you. Hello, my name's Aileen Davis. I live on Clement Street in Florence, and I just wanted to speak briefly to the value of the Northampton Open Media for their, the enhanced community involvement, add to the connection, spreading information, and increased opportunities to, to learn and to share from one another. I would also ask, note that it would be so helpful to have non-programming listed in electronic and online program guide. And speaking as a member of the Northampton School Committee, I've seen firsthand and have been so impressed by the professionalism and hard work of those that work for Northampton Open Media. They're helpful and kind, and, and I really appreciate them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Natalie?
Hey, I'm Natalie Graves. I live in East Hampton, and my opinions are very obvious. In the last year, I have produced three performance events in the valley, theater, music, and dance, and these were all made possible because of the equipment rentals from Northampton Open Media. The only reason that any of these events made sense for our meter arts budget is because of access to this equipment. I am also one of the notoriously online youth cutting the cord, and now my entire family is banging down my door asking me how to do it themselves. This is a long-term contract, and we need to be realistic about the dwindling subscriber numbers. It's not going to be sustainable long-term for funding. It needs to be a flat rate to be reasonable and reliable for nonprofit organizations. I encourage you to fully fund the 5% and the Capitalists. Please continue to digitize, those are highly valuable materials, and we need the HD quality for everyone who is still viewing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Jack Brown on Zoom. Hey, Jack.
Hi, I'm Jack Brown. I handle communications for the Greater Northampton Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Hampshire County Regional Tourism Council. We are tasked with bringing folks to the area and also supporting local businesses and arts initiatives. I cannot say enough good things about both the organization that we're talking about, Northampton Open Media, and also the people that make it what it is. They have supported us recording our annual meetings and other events for many years. As you know, they support the local government, but also I feel like something that often goes unnoticed is the archiving that these folks are doing for our community. You know, so much of what makes Northampton what it is are our local arts programs, our events, crowdsourced cinema, you know, these things that we take for granted that are really special in a town of this size. And a big part of what makes that happen is Northampton Open Media. You know, they're providing equipment, teaching opportunities, and just a chance for people to lift themselves up through the arts and through performance initiatives like this. So I am here to advocate for as much funding as possible over and beyond the 5% for program listings in the guide and for a flat funding rate. I think it would be great to not be reliant on those changing subscription numbers. As we all know, things have been shifting so much in the media world over the last few years. So, let's fund them as best we can and help Northampton do what it does best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam, and then coming up in the room after Pam is David Herrera and Stanley Moulton.
Hi, my name's Pamela Hunter. I live in Florence, and I was privileged to be part of NCTV from the very beginning. I was on the board when we created it, and now it's NOM. I like to use all the initials. I think that particularly under Al's leadership, this station has become more than a TV station. It has surpassed anything we could have thought of happening when this whole thing started in the basement of Northampton High School. I will not repeat everything that people have said. I agree with everything that has been said so far. I would point out, however, I'll emphasize, capital funding. If you can't have the equipment, you can't do the job. And so that capital funding makes a huge difference. I have a computer that doesn't work too well, but I can go down to Best Buy or wherever and buy it. They need the equipment, and it needs to be updated regularly, or we won't get this. It is an incredible city resource, and I think that as people are more involved in media as opposed to print, and we know that we're losing print, this is going to become even more critical to our life as a city, as an arts community, as a government-educated metropolis, I guess, maybe not. But anyway, so thank you very much. I think that this is a critical resource for the city, and it should be funded above anything that we can even imagine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Rachel Maori on Zoom.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Maori. I'm the Vice President of the City Council, North Hampton. You know, I've been on council now, this is my third term, and like many integral things in our lives that we take for granted, we've been taking NOM for granted. So I've actually, I think it's really been good to reflect and, you know, take this moment to think about what Northampton Open Media brings to our community. You know, we've heard NOM has had a positive impact in a myriad of ways that people have spoken about. I can speak about our city government, city council, our boards and committees, no less than depend on the Northampton Open Media to inform, educate, and engage our community members, and really importantly, make city government accessible. And it makes engagement possible in our community. And as Bill, who I served with, you know, mentioned, during the pandemic, our government would not have functioned properly without this connecting point, this critical source of information that Northampton Open Media was, was, you know, putting out. And now we see that through, you know, when we, when we think about future crises, with a fully and robustly funded Northampton Open Media, we will at least be prepared in this way. What a blessing. And so I see, what I see is that the need in our community is, it's growing, it's expanding, it's becoming more complex, and we're going to need that full 5% operational funding for Northampton Open Media, and we're going to need it, full capital funding, as others spoke to. We need it to be a flat rate, a predictable rate, because this is such, you know, an important thing in our community. The bottom line is that we all benefit, including Comcast, by this type of nuts and bolts, regular engagement that, that Northampton Open Media makes possible. It makes good business sense, it's good community building, it's good governance, it's a crucial stabilizer, and no less helps protect our democracy. Northampton Open Media is the glue that holds so much together. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Actually, Councilor Moulton, I'm sorry, it's David. Okay, he's gonna let you go first. You're both very gracious.
Stan Moulton, thank you, David, for letting me go before you. I live at 34 Perkins Avenue. I've been a Northampton resident for 48 years. I'm a retired journalist who spent more than four decades working at the Daily Hampshire Gazette. I'm a former member of the Board of Directors of Northampton Open Media, serving as the mayoral appointee in 2020, 2021, and I'm currently a city council. I say all that because I have, from all those perspectives, observed the value that Northampton Open Media, formerly known as NCTV, has brought to Northampton since its very beginning, more than four decades ago, when it started as Continental Cable Vision was granted the very first license to provide cable service in Northampton. We've heard about that basement studio at Northampton High School. From the beginning, it was committed to training students and, and providing a real service to, to the high school. And of course, all of that continues today with, with tremendous growth. As my colleagues on the city council have, have mentioned, it's an invaluable service, not just to us as elected officials, but of course to the entire community to have all of these meetings broadcast and archived. Some 300 meetings are now archived annually on the NOM government YouTube channel. And I also want to mention that the, the non-government YouTube channel that NOM operates has some 6,000 subscribers, and since the last contract took effect eight years ago, has averaged 250,000 views a year. That translates into 29,000 hours annually of viewing content that is produced by NOM staff and/or community members. So I am too adding my voice to those who are calling for the continued, at least the continued, full 5% operational funding for NOM in the next license renewal, a full funding for its capital request to buy the equipment that's used by staff and community members for government coverage, Northampton Public Schools projects, member productions, and other community events. And to ensure that that capital funding is fixed and not tied to cable television, subscriber numbers. And also, I would like to see the conversion of the three local channels used by NOM for broadcasting to HD format, which, you know, is now 26 years old and is really the industry's standard. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Next on Zoom is Joe.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you see and hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, cool. My name is Joe Meigen. I live at 58 Holly Street, and I'm a media artist, and I've been a NOM member for, I think, the entire six years I've been living here, and it's been an invaluable resource for artists, but also students. I think in this increasing media-dense world that we're living in, providing people public access to not only document and learn how to create, so they can document things around them, explore media creation, and just expand the creative possibilities of multimedia and video and broadcasting. And I just believe that there should be way more than the full 5% operational funding for Northampton Open Media, full capital funding of the NOM Capitalist, and ensure capital funding is a flat figure, not tied to subscriber numbers, and all channels should be in HD. It's just been, I've like directly been supported by my involvement with Northampton Open Media, just from getting instructions to like learn things that I was having trouble with, making media art, and just like going over different proposal ideas or having access to documented council meetings or news broadcasts or different things that they have archived. It's just like such a good resource, and I feel like as we have more media in our lives, having people be able to make use of it. And also, the newest thing that they've been doing where they're providing access to learning more about computers to people is such a valuable thing, because people can't even apply for jobs without being able to use a computer now, so I think it's really important, media literacy. But yeah, I echo so much of the things people have been saying about the support for Northampton Open Media. Yeah, I hope that it continues to grow. Thank you so much. I yield the rest of my time.
David, thank you.
Hello, I'm David Herrera. I'm from Sheldon Falls. I'm the Senior Producer at Falls Cable, and I'm proud to say that I am a product of Northampton Open Media. I started a small videography thing for a local nonprofit called CFCE, which works with children and their families ages three and under. When the pandemic hit, they needed something to do to keep their grant funding coming in, and none of them knew how to do anything online. I had a little bit of training in high school and a little bit of training in college a decade ago on how to start making film stuff. So I started making kids puppet shows. Fast forward to the important part. I got involved with the crowdsourced cinema through a puppetry group, the the Western Massachusetts Puppetry Guild. And we did a scene in their production of Jurassic Park, which is one of the greatest memories of my life. And after I found, after we completed that, I started looking into what North Hampton Open Media did and offered, and I saw the classes, and I said, wow, I think it'd be a really great idea to bump up my skills. So I started taking classes at North Hampton Open Media, and it reminded me of a lot that I had forgotten. And it opened up my eyes to what was available with new and decent equipment and better editing software and things like that. And I finished the courses, and now I'm working for my local Falls, for Falls Cable, which is my local cable station, and like to mirror what the, I think supervisor from Greenfield Televisions was saying, they are a model, not just for Western Mass, but for the entire country. What they do, everyone else points to and goes, oh, maybe we should try that. And I'm sure a lot of that's down to Al and his leadership. But I'm here to support that and show that I would not have had that job. My videography company would not be going, working with Falls Cable, going all over New England now, filming productions to bring back for my viewers at my station if it wasn't for the training and the encouragement that I got from North Hampton Open Media. So, and Falls Cable is now, in a way, a bit of a child of North Hampton Open Media as well because, again, we point to you guys and we look, what can, what can we do that they're doing already? How can we better ourselves to be like them and aspire to be like them? So, thank you. Thank you very much, and pretty please, give them anything they want.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Foxman. Can you unmute Wendy?
Yeah, I could now, I couldn't before. Thank you for having this hearing, Wendy Foxman, Rachel Maori's Ward Seven. I, since other people are talking about their background, I was a member of the Greenfield Community Television Advisory Committee back in many, many, many years ago, and co-founded Greenfield Community Television. So it's exciting to hear that you're here tonight, if you're still here. I completely support and agree with everything that's been said about North Hampton Open Media. It is an essential service. And I don't want to say much more because everybody had so much to say and in, and in great detail. Because I have other things I wanted to bring up. I have had the, what's called the triple package, what was called the triple package, for many years here now that I've lived at North Hampton. I don't know what it's called now. I have to have a phone and I have, you know, television, all of that. I called recently to ask about dropping television. And frankly, it took me forever to talk to somebody and to get to where I could even begin that conversation. When we opened, when we had this contract over the 10 years, Comcast has closed its, most of its local offices where you can bring or, you know, pick up equipment. I don't know how to, you have to decide, I'm going to put this day aside for customer service issues with Comcast. It is the single worst megalithical kind of, or even, you know, it's just impossible to, to really do things. So I gave up. They came back with a very slight, I asked, what do it cost to remove television from my, what was called triple package, and it was negligible. And everyone says, well, just tell them you're going to change services and they'll give you a better deal. Well, I've not done that. Haven't had the time. So, and then I get my next bill is $20 more. So, not happy with customer service. I think it's a huge part that people don't talk about enough. They do, not in public meetings, but everybody grouses about it. So I hope that something is paid attention about that. And for people who, like myself and Bill, who have read the license, it feels like it's a different century. I mean, we're so far along now technologically and in so many other ways. I do want to say something very positive also about a Comcast employee, Edlin Black, who has, has been helpful to me various times over the years after successive contracted technicians had failed. So he's a Comcast employee, and I haven't seen him in years, but he's been very helpful to me, and I think it's something nice to say about the company as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next in the room is Jane Harrison-Milman, followed by Michael Stein in the room.
Hi, my name is Jane Harrison-Milman. I'm a junior at North Hampton High School, and I'm a member of The Transcript, which is North Hampton High School's student-run news and media organization. Over the past three years, through my work on the transcripts, weekly segments, I've had the opportunity to interview members of local organizations, state legislators, and countless members of the North, North Hampton City Government, many of whom are here today, about topics that are important to me and other high school students, ranging from our reporting on the school budget process last spring to traveling to New York City to cover Trump's Madison Square Garden rally. During my freshman and sophomore years, I produced documentaries looking into how the issues of domestic violence and the gender pay gap can be addressed through legislation, receiving awards in the National C-Spin Student Camp Competition. Participating in The Transcript has not only helped me to learn technical skills of media production, but it has also changed the way that I view myself, interact with the world around me, teaching me how to ask questions, engage with leaders, and work with my peers. None of this would have been possible without the support of North Hampton Open Media. North Hampton Open Media provides us with camera equipment, computers, editing software, and the basement studio space that is located in our school building. The work of The Transcript, that The Transcript is able to do is a direct result of this amazing collaboration between us, North Hampton Open Media, Comcast, and the city of North Hampton. I've had the chance to meet with Mayor Shara, members of North Hampton Open Media, and representatives of Comcast several times over the past year, and it's been amazing to see how the community values The Transcript and their ongoing support of us and our work. And so by funding North Hampton Open Media, you're continuing to support this partnership and to sustain The Transcript for years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Jara.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jara Salakin, and I'm speaking tonight in support of North Hampton Open Media and to request the organization receives its full operational funding. I wanted to talk about the partnership between NOM and North Hampton High School and the influence and the different, huge difference it has made for my daughter. She's a sophomore, and through the use of equipment supplied by NOM, smoke has been ignited. Because of North Hampton Open Media's support, high school students have access to training, cameras, computers, and editing software that would typically be out of reach for financial reasons. When high school students have exposure and access like this, it is eye-opening and life-changing. I am so grateful to North Hampton Open Media and to Jeremy Whelan, the Communication and Media Productions teacher at NHS. And I want to say, my daughter normally would be the one giving this presentation tonight, but she's actually up at Berkshire East documenting the North Hampton High School ski team using equipment she has access to through the high school and NOM. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to echo a lot of what my colleagues in the city council and school committee have said. One of the great silver linings for me on the school committee is being the appointed NOM board member. It's a wonderful group of people, and it's allowed me to learn even more about the organization, which is truly incredible. And that has a lot to do with Al's leadership, but also tremendous community engagement. And I'd urge the city to negotiate as hard as they can to secure the laundry list you've heard from everybody, flat funding not based on a percentage of subscribers, full capitalist, HD conversion for the cable stations, et cetera. I also just want to say what an incredible service that NOM provides for the community by being really our record of public, of public meetings and of government. It is exceptional, the level of production and commitment you all bring to those meetings and how quickly you turn them around and how well you manage those. Anyone can find this information really easily, and a lot has to go on for that to happen, and you do it all. And I'm really grateful for it. The other thing I really want to highlight is the impact on, on students. The work of The Transcript, the encouragement that Jeremy has given to so many students, their engagement with technology they wouldn't have access to otherwise, including some of the best editing software and cameras around. It's really incredible, and it's a leveling, a leveling device of social equity for a lot of people who get interested in things that they wouldn't otherwise have access to. So I'm really grateful for NOM. I'm really grateful to see so much adoration and love for the organization. It's well deserved, and look forward to many more wonderful years of NOM providing this type of resource to the community.
Thanks. Next is Counselor Garrett Perry on Zoom.
Hello, everyone here. Sorry for catching me in the kitchen while I'm cooking. If you don't know me, I am Garrett Perry, current counselor-at-large here in North Hampton. But also, I'm a musician and event organizer for decades here in North Hampton. Many of my colleagues have used the equipment and training that North Hampton Open Media offers. We were able to complete and document a variety of community events as well as personal projects, so I'm very thankful for that. And as a city employee, you know, it's, it's been phenomenal being able to go back and look at all of the archived content. In fact, before I decided to run, North Hampton Open Media was how I was able to peer into or behind the curtain of government, you know, even during those epically long meetings in 2020. Watching those, I still decided to run. And, you know, I think that everyone else has said how important North Hampton Open Media is to the community, but in a city that's based in, in culture, in arts, we all owe a great debt to North Hampton Open Media. And, and also, as one of the few counselors who works a job during the night, I don't think I would be able to serve as a city counselor without the, the services that North Hampton Open Media provides. So I do want to thank all of the workers for their kindness and dedication and North Hampton Open Media. And then I also want to say that I, I hope that Comcast realizes the impact that you all have on our community. You know, a, a lot of folks do view these meetings through the internet, but a lot of people watch on cable. You know, I've had people say, hey, I saw you on TV the other day, which I'm always baffled by. And while I also have issues with some of the customer service, I do want to thank Comcast for connecting folks. You know, you, you provide a service that is essential, not only now, but the future of not only our city, but I think, you know, the, the world is in content creation and, and being connected through this. So I too support funding North Hampton Open Media with at least the 5%, and anything else you can give to them would be greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next in the room is Jaclyn, followed by Oliver.
Hi, I'm Jackie Bernstein. I moved to North Hampton less than two years ago, and one of the first things I did when I moved here is take the production courses at North Hampton Open Media. And this was, I learned a lot, but it was really a way for me to feel at home in my community. North Hampton Open Media is a really invaluable space, both in terms of equipment and education, but also in terms of community support and as a way to meet people and share our stories and share our own point of view. So I really encourage you to fully fund that 5% figure as well as anything and everything that they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Ellie.
Yeah, hi there. My name is Ellie here, I'm Donnie. I'm a senior at North Hampton High School, an independent filmmaker, a former senior editor at North Hampton High's Video Magazine, and a member of North Hampton Open Media's Board of Directors. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as a lifelong member of the North Hampton community, and I'm asking you for, for you to continue to support NOM. To continue to continuation of the current 5% operational funding for NOM, full funding of the NOM capitalist, does not tie to subscriber numbers, and the full continued support to North Hampton Open Media and all their activities, including converting NOM's channels to HD, listing their programming with electronic and online programming guides, and continuing to climb into the fullest degree. Over the past three years, I've had the pleasure of working closely with NOM to expand my creative horizons. And it's thanks to every employee there, past and present, that I've been able to build a network of like-minded creatives to work on countless productions. They make opportunities typically unheard of in a city like North Hampton, not only accessible for free. But NOM is more than that. They're more than just empowering entire classes of students like myself to pursue real-world experiences in photo/video journalism on the internet, more than just providing hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of resources and knowledge for free.
We are, we're losing your audio. Can you say again?
Sorry, more than just, more than just. Can you hear me?
No, I'm sorry.
See, that's, that's what they, they try to talk. Can you, can you hear me?
You'll come back on, is that what you're saying? Yeah, I'll call back on you in, in, in a bit. Okay. Oh, they're on the bus. Oh. How about Oliver in the room? Oliver, you still here? Hi, Oliver.
Hi, everyone. I'm Oliver, I'm a student at North Hampton High School. I'm a freshman, and I just want to talk about how North Hampton Open Media has affected me and my fellow students. So, I mean, I've always really liked taking pictures, but I never really had access to like real cameras and real editing software. So I came to NHS and I took Mr. Whelan's photography class, and through him and the funds that North Hampton Open Media provided, I was able to, well, I can't talk, I'm sorry. I was able to, I was able to further my passion for photography and aerial photography. And I hope that North Hampton Open Media can continue funding, funding our education in the future.
Thanks so much. Great job. Okay, Kai on Zoom.
Hello, I'm Kai Petrie. I'm a student at North Hampton High School and a North Hampton resident. North Hampton Open Media has given me, and just an unbelievable opportunity as a student, the equipment that is provided from them in the communications and media production classes, an opportunity I don't think I would have at many other schools, and I'm incredibly grateful for. I didn't really have a plan after high school on what I wanted to do, and it wasn't until I joined the class that I was able to, that I saw that this was what I wanted to do, and is, media production is something I want to pursue, and it's not something I had planned on doing before. Over the summers, I was able to rent out equipment from NOM when the equipment at the school wasn't available to me, and I was able to make short films with my friends, and. I'm usually in charge of post-production with all of that, and I have a Adobe Creative Cloud license from that, and it's an incredibly expensive subscription, and I'm very happy that, or unaffordable subscription, at least to me, that my school has been able to provide that to me. And they would not be able to do that if it was not for North Hampton Open Media. And I encourage as much funding as we can give to NOM. They are a wonderful resource, and I believe everybody should have access to resources like that. And yeah, North Hampton Open Media has changed my life, and I'm incredibly thankful to every member of North Hampton Open Media.
Thank you. Okay, Molly, Molly Maxner in the room? Hi.
Hello, my name is Molly Maxner, and I'm one of the co-directors of APE in North Hampton. And I have the pleasure of working closely with Al and the other wonderful people at NOM through the work of the North Hampton Community Arts Trust and 33 Holly. NOM are incredible partners. NOM are incredible partners in building and sustaining a robust art scene in Northampton, which we know positively impacts economics and quality of life in our city. NOM is a partner in the thriving of 33 Holly, which serves hundreds of artists and thousands of audience members every year. I also want to speak as a parent. I was born and raised in Northampton and then moved away for many years and moved back three years ago. And in that moving back, I've thought a lot about what it is to choose a place to raise children. NOM is absolutely hands down part of what makes the city a very special and unique place to raise a family. When I told my 14-year-old daughter about this hearing, she said, oh my God, I gotta go, I have to speak for NOM. Well, she can't be here tonight, unfortunately, but she sends this message. She says NOM is such an amazing resource. I love knowing they are there, offering access to equipment that I would never ever get to use at this time in my life. And they are so knowledgeable and generous with that knowledge. They're super important to me. As a parent, I want to uplift that part of what my daughter said. It's not just the equipment that NOM offers, but their extraordinary generosity of the people who work at NOM. They care and they empower people of all ages with knowledge and skills. When I think of NOM, I think of integrity, access, profound and active dedication to our community. Northampton is what it is in part because of NOM and their foresight, their vision, and ongoing work for and with our community. Please ensure full 5% operational funding for NOM. Please ensure full capital funding of NOM's capitalist. Ensure that capital funding is a flat figure, not tied to subscriber numbers. Ensure that all NOM TV channels are converted to HD. And please ensure that there is additional funding to make sure that NOM can live fully in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is it Ellie or Eli? Ellie, they're, they're gone again. Okay, in the room Kathy Couch, followed by Tom Sturm.
Hi, my name is Kathy Couch. I'm the other co-director of APE and I am also a founding and current board member of the Northampton Community Arts Trust and building partner with Northampton Open Media, working closely with Al Williams there along with the Center for the Arts. And I echo everything that everybody has already said about NOM and I feel like just want to highlight the way that Northampton Open Media is really a beacon of access and what that means, the breadth of what that means. Not only offering our community access to governmental proceedings and city council meetings and school board meetings, but also no matter what your point of view is, Northampton Open Media is there to support and empower you to find an outlet and train you how to speak clearly and creatively. And that kind of breadth of voices in our community feels so essential at this time. And they just do so much to empower people to be able to share their ideas. So I also just want to say that they serve that role within the ecology of 33 Holly and the building partners. Al is a real leader in the way that we run the building and teaches us, all, all of us who, who run that building, how to think about things in ways that are humane and just and accessible. And they bring so many important community members into that space. So I really encourage you to do everything you can to fund Northampton Open Media 5% beyond and meet all their capital requests, flat funding, and please convert the channels to HD. Offer all the content creators and the government workings the dignity of being seen at the highest like technology possible. Offer everybody that respect would be really great. Thank you and thank you, Northampton Open Media.
Thanks. Tom, are you still here? Tom?
Hi. I'm Tom Sturm, local personality. I've, I've worked in a lot of local media. I'm a musician. I've interfaced, I've known Al for probably going on 30 years. Back when I was working at the Valley Advocate adjacent to Stan and Jack Brown and some other folks around here probably. I did a cover story on Northampton Open Media, I think it was NCTV back then. Was still in the basement of the high school and I did that because I thought it was a really important thing and I could see what he was doing was really gonna make it break out and be something a lot more than it had been. And it really has, he's done an unbelievable job. I think it's come so far and, and not even that long, maybe 10 or 12 years or however long ago that was. I've personally interfaced with it on so many different levels. I've taken video editing classes there. As a musician, I've done the performance in Look Park for probably 15 years, which they're always there documenting and recording. Really crucial and things that you'll, you'll, you know, you, things you don't want to lose culturally. So many, so many talented people that come through and, and put poor dozens and dozens of hours of work into things that would not be documented any other way, except for maybe some snippets on people's phones at this point. I also wanted to say, echo a couple of things that your city counselors and former city counselors mentioned in that. So one of the things I did as one of my musical iterations, iterations is as a kid's pirate. I have a kid's pirate act called Snack Beard that I would play every New Year, for the first night, for several years in a row I played. And one year, it was the pandemic and I showed up and I had to basically play to Northampton Open Media and the cameras. It was a little heartbreaking, but thank God it was there because like I can't even imagine like the, the number of performances that they were able to livestream during the pandemic and, and, you know, bring a little bit of connection to people in a time where there was none. So I think that's about, oh, and the other one, other thing, I also participated in the, in the crowdsourced cinema with my whole family. We made, we did work on the Star Wars recreation, which was shown at the Academy of Music. And it's just a great time when people put a ton of work into that and they show up and there's a whole huge public screening and, you know, all of these things are just the multiple, multiple facets of importance that Northampton Open Media has for the city of Northampton. So yes, please give it its full 5% funding, flat funding, and if you can make room for ESPN4 and HD, please give it to Northampton Open Media as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think it says Travis? Travis?
Hello, my name is Travis Emerson. I'm a student at Northampton High School, senior this year, and I will be graduating the high school, participating in a career path that I never would have even knew was open to me. In my freshman year of high school in my English class, I decided to work on the yearbook with Jeremy Wayland. While inside of that classroom, I saw all the transcript students working hard and fast on their long weekly projects. I was inspired by this. In the following year, in my sophomore year, I joined the class. I was going through a very challenging period of my life, but all the students were there to support me. I've continued taking the transcript for four semesters now. I'm now applying to colleges strictly in the career-oriented space, going into communication and media production. I am very proud to say that I now have my own show on the transcript where I go downtown into the Northampton community to interview random strangers on the street. I've built up a community with people in downtown Northampton where I'm able to get recognized by students and also other people I've interviewed in the past. I've been lucky enough to have this opportunity thanks to Northampton Open Media, who has helped to fund the transcript. Without the technology that Northampton Open Media has provided to the transcript, I wouldn't be who I am today. I have learned so much from Northampton Open Media as well as the transcript and students and Jeremy Wayland and I am so proud that I have gotten to work with such powerful people and such a strong organization. Please fund Northampton Open Media. It is very dire and important to the next generations to come.
Thank you. Shira Sweetz.
Hi, my name is Shira Sweet and I'm a junior at Northampton High School. Since my freshman year, I've been part of the transcript, the high school's video journalism program. And throughout this experience, one thing has been made very clear to me. Not every student has access to the opportunities that the ones Northampton Open Media provides us. Supporting Northampton Open Media is much more than providing us with the tools to create. It is about leveling the playing field. It gives all of us the opportunity to explore, grow, and share our voices in ways we may not otherwise be able to. During my time at NHS, Northampton Open Media's funding and support has allowed me to win not one, but two National C-SPAN documentary awards, an achievement that I and others would not have been able to reach without the resources and equipment that NOM provides. In the bigger picture, there is a critical need for students to be able to see and tell stories through journalism and media production. By supporting Northampton Open Media, you are helping students develop essential skills for our education and futures. I urge you to continue supporting its mission during the review process so NOM can continue thriving and enriching our community right now and for years to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Shira. Cairo.
Hello, my name is Cairo Harrell and I am a junior at Northampton High School. I would like to start by saying that Northampton Open Media provides many community-building events that are essential for a well-structured community in town. An example of this is the crowdsourced cinema, which my family and friends and I participated in, and the short film festival, both of which were organized by Northampton Open Media. My parents also produced a documentary with the help of NOM and it was shown at the Academy of Music in 2023. Not only has NOM done many things for this town, but it has helped the media department in my school as well. Jeremy Wayland, a former board member, was able to grow the media department at NHS to what it is today. He currently teaches photography, a class I have taken and can say that it is an amazing class and a great learning opportunity, as well as the transcript, both of which would not exist or be nearly as well executed without the support from NOM. All this to say, I urge you to provide full funding for NOM and any additional funding so that the board, which has done so much for me, my school, and my family, can continue to support the many members of Northampton. Thank you.
Thanks, Cairo. Melissa?
Hi. My name is Melissa McClung and I'm a filmmaker, animator, and educator based in Hadley. I first walked into NOM's space 10 years ago and I've never looked back. At that time, I just moved back to the area. Although I had some experience making short films, I still wasn't sure I had what it takes. Enter NOM and Al. The experience I had making a film for their seven-day film sprint gave me the needed confidence boost as a writer-director. Maybe this art thing could work. A few months later, NOM's production grant program gave me my first experience writing and receiving an artist grant. NOM provided me with equipment for films that wanted to premiere at my first film festivals. 10 years later, I'm still at it. I've gotten funds for grants around the country, collaborated on films with celebrated directors, and continually premiering films at some of the world's oldest and most prestigious film festivals. All this to say, I owe my creative career path to NOM. NOM gave me and continues to give me crucial support as an artist in the form of funding, top-of-the-line equipment, community, and motivation. The organization has allowed me to create a path in film in Western Massachusetts outside of the country's main film hubs. The staff of NOM continues to be a wonderful support system as I navigate making a life in the arts. NOM is an invaluable community resource, as you've heard. As a former NOM board member, I know that they depend on the Comcast revenue. I urge you to maintain these funds for NOM. NOM is cutting edge in everything they do. They've been recognized as the leading public access station in the country. Their equipment is top-notch for pros and beginners alike. Their workshops are amazing free resources, as we've heard, to create a more media-literate and creatively empowered community, essential in our media-saturated world. Not to mention NOM provides a public service, our townspeople, to keep our townspeople informed. NOM even plays a part in our public education. Our award-winning high schoolers that you've heard today are making nationally-recognized media pieces, pieces thanks to NOM's support. Giving NOM the full 5% funding and everything they've been asking for is a no-brainer and will continue to pay dividends to our creative and broader community. And I just want to add that being here tonight as a long-term member is like a reunion and it's so much fun to hear how much it's touched everyone. So thank you. Thank you.
Next is Michael Tornal, maybe? Yeah.
Greetings. My name is Michael Tornal. I'm a Northampton resident and I'm a senior at Northampton High School. For the last two years, I've been working on NHS's video news magazine, The Transcript, and I'm the current senior news editor. Every Friday, we put out an episode with a series of segments ranging from short narrative films to serious, in-depth news stories. This makes The Transcript an incredible class that appeals to a wide variety of NHS students. Through The Transcript, I have discovered my passion for media arts and I have decided to pursue it in college and beyond. I have had incredible opportunities that are unique to the audiovisual department. I have been able to develop my leadership abilities and professionalism in a fast-paced environment. And I have won several accolades that have allowed me to get into a great college with incredible scholarships and opportunities along with it. I started Emerson in the fall. Now, what does this have to do with Northampton Open Media? NOM has been imperative to the success of The Transcript. They have given us continued support, which includes providing us with equipment, allowing us to use their spaces for filming, and giving us guidance when we need it. In a department that does not receive a lot of funds from the city, we rely on NOM to keep The Transcript afloat. Without them, The Transcript would cease to be what it is today and be a significantly worse program. Funding for Northampton Open Media is funding for Northampton Public Schools. It is funding for me and it is funding for every other student who has ever or will ever pass through any single one of Jeremy Wayland's incredible classes at Northampton High. Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett Williams.
Hi. Yeah, I think I'm just gonna pick it up. I'm gonna have to read from my phone, so I stay on topic here. My name is Garrett Williams. I'm on the Northampton Arts Council as the clerk and I live in Florence. I moved here in 2020 because my wife and I wanted to raise our kids in a place that valued equity and inclusion. So here we are. So far, it's been great. Thank you for the community. I want to speak sort of from an outsider's perspective because I come from public access in my hometown of Beverly. I started working with them when I was in high school in the early 2000s, 20, well, more than 20 years ago. And as a teenager, I was given free training, free equipment, space, and computers with editing software, which was hugely valuable to my young creative mind. I actually learned how to edit on reel-to-reel tapes, which is not really a thing anymore, but I'm feeling my age in saying that. My experience led to a job at the station, which led to film school, and then a successful career in film and TV. I worked at BevCam, like I said, about 20 years ago and we were having the same discussions. HD was already a thing back then and when we were renegotiating our deal with Comcast, we kind of had those same talks where we were like, oh, this should be in HD. All of our cameras are already doing it. So I'm surprised we're still having that discussion. That should definitely be on the table for this upcoming negotiation. I remember when the director at the time, Rob McCosland, I don't know if you know him, he's a, he's a public access guy. He explained the impetus of public access to me by saying that the people own the airwaves. And if Comcast wants to provide TV here, they also need to provide access to that media for the community. Now, I think it's fair to say now that the people own the internet and we should be provided access to that. So as the community... So, as the community, or as the media landscape changes, I think media literacy is really important, and I think it's important that Comcast steps up and continues to provide that, because NOM is not just a TV station, it's a media station. And I think as a community, we need to continue to provide funding and ask for all of those things from Comcast, because they're like a multinational conglomerate, and they can afford it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thomas Campbell.
How's everybody? I am a, my name is Thomas Campbell. I am a board member for Northampton Open Media. I have worked with them for at least a decade now. I started making short films with them, and I've done, worked with Melissa on some of her projects, worked on some other just community stuff, and I would like to imagine that this is mostly a formality. I can't really imagine the city being able to continue without Northampton Open Media. I can't really imagine the city being able to function on a civic level without access to the meetings that we have. If the city were to try and fund that themselves with the equipment and the staff and everything else, I think it would cost much more than they already give them. In addition to that, they provide free services to the schools, which is, again, another thing that I think that would cost a lot more if the city tried to provide it for themselves. I mean, we've heard what they do for families, we've heard what they do for the community, we've heard how they act as an archive. I basically would reiterate that, what I said earlier, is I can't imagine the town being able to function civically without Northampton Open Media.
Thank you. Dylan Gaffney. Oh, Dylan?
So, I'm Dylan Gaffney. I live at 23 Marshall Street in Northampton. I'm a lifelong resident of Northampton, work in the archives of Forbes Library, served on the Northampton Historical Commission, and served in 2019 on the city's Charter Review Committee. As a lifelong resident and someone who's actively engaged in civic life in the city, I would implore you to provide full operational and capital funding for Northampton Open Media for its vital role serving our community. The value of their work covering government meetings alone makes them an irreplaceable part of our city. With the rapid decline in local newspapers and local news coverage, this is something our city cannot do without if it wants to inform constituents. We saw it most critically during the pandemic, as everyone else has said, when the city needed to pivot to continue to allow participation, but we see it regularly around elections, budget season, and all the month-in and month-out and day-in and day-out work a city needs to engage in so that it can be accessible and accountable to the people. From Forbes Library's perspective, we simply could not provide many of our most important and popular services without the assistance of Northampton Open Media. They provide the staffing and the equipment for our free outdoor movies on the lawn, the expertise, guidance, and training that enable us to livestream our author talks, our meetings, our lectures, and events. They provide equipment and training for us to start recording oral history interviews of the last 10 years, preserving the history of the community. They've trained our staff in video and audio editing so that we can create short films to entertain and inform our patrons, and promotional materials for fundraising. They provide equipment, training, and software so that we can digitize materials for the public to preserve our community's history. Recently, they've begun providing regular drop-in tech help at the library for our patrons, which is a dramatic need we see firsthand every day. They are truly our closest collaborators in the community, and together, we put on film festivals, concerts, outdoor films, live podcasts, workshops, classes, and so much more. From a personal perspective, the shift in my library work from somebody who just pulled books every day for interlibrary loan, which is a great service in and of itself, but through a career and indeed a calling, happened directly because of my collaborations with Northampton Open Media and the people who work there. They allowed me to see a new way of belonging to and serving the community that I hadn't really understood or grasped until we started working together. We need Northampton Open Media in order to be the city we aspire to be, and they deserve your full support and full funding.
Thanks, Dylan. Robert Barber, I think?
My name's Robin Barber. I'm born in Northampton and former chair of the Board of NCTV years ago. Al, I hope that you and your staff are feeling the love. This outpouring of admiration is completely appropriate. Thanks, Mayor Sierra and your staff for organizing this amazing event. You know, we've been hearing about the corporate control of the media, and this is a case of free, open, decentralized multimedia resources that can't be shut down. And what we're asking is to open it up more, to continue to provide the programming that ought to be listed on the cable program guide, it ought to be in HD, it's on the web, and that connection should remain secure, along with capital dollars to continue to provide the excellent equipment that people have been so grateful for tonight, hearing about. Just to the max, Comcast, give back to the max to the city that provides you with profits from your enterprise. I also want to thank Jeremy Whelan, former program coordinator at NCTV, now the teacher and guide of media at Northampton High School, for igniting enthusiasm among his students who learn the language of media, and then, after they graduate, can continue to produce using the resources from Northampton Open Media. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Florian?
Let's try it like that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Florian Mashun. I live here in Northampton. I'm a professional photographer, and at the moment, it's my pleasure to serve my second term on the Board of Northampton Open Media. The organization, we are all talking here about today. I first connected with NOM in 2019, when my family and I moved here. I saw an opportunity to engage with local creatives and become active within the community. However, I was instantly surprised of how much more the team led by Al was accomplishing. NOM goes beyond its traditional role of documenting what's happening in Northampton and sharing content via cable channels and online platforms. It has created a vibrant community that unites people from different age groups, backgrounds, and experiences. NOM inspires individuals to create and share the stories, foster dialogue, facilitates conversation, and captures the diverse facets of life in Northampton. There are numerous impressive aspects of NOM worth mentioning, and we have thankfully heard a lot of them today. There's awards which have been won. I don't think anyone has mentioned an Emmy today. That was a great achievement for the organization, but it's countless, and the list is long, and the list will be longer in the future as well. It covers government meetings with the excellence of, but what I'm most impressed today is how many people showed up today to support this endeavor and to support Northampton Open Media today and during the entire contract negotiations process. Therefore, I urge Comcast to keep supporting Northampton Open Media over the next 10 years by providing the full funding it's asking for and support the community it's living in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan is next.
NOM's, the, NOM making the transcript and supporting the transcript is, has, okay, The Transcript's been very helpful for me. I've been through very hard times in my life, and I've always kind of had The Transcript to rely back on, and to just have that outlet for creativity where I might not otherwise be able to express myself has been invaluable, and I don't think it could be understated how much it has helped my life. So, if, just, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. Jeremy.
Hi, everybody. Jeremy Whelan, technology teacher at Northampton High School. I'm uniquely situated in all this because I'm having flashbacks from 10 years ago, and in a way, I'm having flashbacks over the entire trajectory of my adulthood. So, bear with me if I get a little emotional on this. I came through Northampton Community Television at the Times Doors because I was working on a documentary on the Belchertown State Schools when I was going to UMass. They didn't have really reliable equipment, and so I searched around and around in western Massachusetts to find the best gear. You know, my own school and my own communities in Belchertown, where I grew up, didn't have things, and where others said that they didn't really do that, Northampton Open Media was there, and they said, not only do we do that, but we do it to the best of our abilities. I just got, you know, totally intoxicated and fell in love with the, not only the stuff that I was doing technically, but just the model of just public access and caring about the community and telling those stories. And so, right out of college, I had the privilege of working at Northampton Open Media with the program coordinator. And through that, I got to see the dedication and hard work behind the scenes of what Zach and Alexa and Al do day in, day out. When those government meetings are going, and they sometimes go till 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, Northampton Open Media is there because it's not, they're often the last people out the doors, and it just brings that transparency and that caring about our community and having that archived, and it's so important. But it extends beyond that, too. As an individual working there, I also worked on crowdsourced cinema with the mayor and other city councilors to make Beetlejuice scenes and Ferris Bueller's Day Off, and so it was just an extension of, the community is not just the ongoings of the civics or things of that nature, but it's also just caring about each other. From there, I started teaching at Northampton High School. I walked in, I was really, you know, a young teacher, I wanted to, you know, change the world. I opened my cabinet, and I see four point-and-shoot cameras staring me at and dead in the face, and I said, you know, there has to be a better way, we have to get some more resources. With public education, it's not always the best funded, so when others said, you know, you have to look to different streams, Northampton Open Media was there to say, how can we do this? How can we accomplish this? Fast forward 11 years later, and it's a bit of a reunion, I see former students that I have on that screen talking about how Northampton Open Media changed their lives. I see students here talking about how they, it changed their lives. It certainly changed my life as well, and I think it changes a lot of people's lives. We're talking about, you know, city councilors and politicians and artists and local businesses, everybody coming together through a common thread of compassion and understanding each other's stories and having that open mind to say, hey, we can not only do this together, but we can do it in a really, you know, caring and compassionate way. So, I just want to say thank you to Northampton Open Media. You certainly changed my life, and as you heard by the stories in this room, you changed the lives of everybody else, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeremy. Hannah?
Hi, y'all. I'm Hannah Cox. I am an employee at Northampton Open Media, and I am also a Northampton resident. At Northampton Open Media, I am the digital navigator, which is part of a new program that Northampton Open Media has in partnership with the Alliance for Digital Equity. So, my job is to help our community learn how to use technology, and I'm not talking the fancy cameras here in the room. I am teaching you how to use your laptop, I'm teaching you how to use your phone, and that's a skill that people really need in this digital age. So, whether you need help accessing a device and getting a laptop, if you need help learning how to turn your laptop on, and if you need help getting affordable internet or a hotspot so you can use your devices at home, that's what we're here to help with. And also, we have drop-in hours. We have drop-in hours at Forbes Library from 1:00 to 2:30, drop-in hours Tuesday night from 5:00 to 8:00, but not tonight because I'm here, and we have drop-in hours 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Thursdays. And this is designed for anyone in the community to come in during those hours, and you can put your laptop in front of me and say, hey, I don't have a Gmail account, I really need help. Or you might say, hey, I do not know how to use a mouse on my computer, and I can help you with that. And this is what digital equity work is, and this is another extension of Northampton Open Media, and I have directly seen the impact of what it means to teach people how to use devices, because when people know how to use their devices, they can advocate for themselves, they can apply for housing, they can apply for SNAP, they can get jobs and get healthcare. So, it's great work. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. Zach.
I'm Zach. I'm the media coordinator, programmer at Northampton Open Media, and I want to thank Al and Alexis, Jeremy, and Dave, and Isley, and the board, and everybody for welcoming me sometime over the summer. I don't actually remember when I started, but I just wanted to say that my personal motto has been to always keep creating, and I was losing that for a moment. God, I'm not gonna do this on public-access television. And when I got this job, I got it back, and it's in large part due to the staff and the community, and I'm so grateful to everybody. And you should do all the things that everybody said that I forget what they are exactly, but fund it and pay for it and give us the money and the things we need to keep going. And if you go on YouTube or onto our cable channels, watch our content. If you have a show or a film or an idea and you don't think you can do it, come in and we'll find a way to do it. And also, make sure to check out The Transcript, because it's the best thing going on public access, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Dave Newland. Thank you for someone finally doing that.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to be last. That was a great mic-drop moment. That would have ended it really well. My name's David Newland. I worked at Northampton Open Media and Northampton Community Television for 12 years before moving on this past year, and it's everything that everybody said, and everybody said that it's everything that everybody said, but something that I wanted to bring up is something that Al told me once, and I would fall back on when people asked what we did. And what we did and what they do is create community with media. And so, that's documenting things, it's documenting meetings and concerts and art shows, and providing everybody the opportunity to see that that couldn't fit in the room the first time, and that's great. But it's also creating spaces where people can be and using media as an excuse to do that. Sometimes, it's not even, the goal's not to make the thing that's on the screen, it's to get the people in the seats interacting with each other and building community in a way where we're all working together towards something, and that's really important. But then beyond that, it's about these individuals. All these people that have spoken have been impacted personally, and I've been impacted personally, and I think that it would be a huge loss to not fund this resource as fully as we could and keep disseminating these things that people are creating in the highest possible quality. People are saying HD, I think we're moving on to 4K at this point. Maybe we should get a couple 4K channels in Northampton. But yes, please continue to support this resource and these people, and it's unique in so many different ways, so thank you.
Thank you. Kathy and Alexis, which one of you are next?
Hi, I'm Kathy Bizzy. I'm former director of community media centers across Massachusetts and in California, so I most recently was, for the last nine years, the director of the Alliance, I'm sorry, the director of Brookline Interactive Group. I'm getting all my things mixed up here. So I was in Brookline, traveling from Holyoke to Brookline for nine years to run that media center there. I've also been on the Western Regional Board of Directors for the Alliance for Community Media, the Northeastern Board, and also the National Board. And what y'all are saying about Northampton being a model for the country, it, it really is, not just for the region. But I heard about Northampton when I was in California and about the amazing things that were happening in this community. I want to read a couple of things because my new role is I'm the, now the director of the Alliance for Digital Equity, which is Western Mac. We serve all four counties of Western Mass. We have over a hundred organizational members in regional coalition, serving the needs of residents and unhoused folks in a hundred and one municipalities across the region. I'm also a resident of Holyoke, and I've used the resources of Northampton Open Media. And I know what it's like. In California, we lost, because of legislation, we lost the ability to negotiate the way that you are able to in Massachusetts and we are able to here. We lost fifty community media centers across California in just one year. Gone. Communities vanished. The ability to bring people together inside of the physical spaces, the ability to cover your government meetings, gone. And those are in Southern California, and I think about that right now, given what's happening there. And I think about how much stronger communities are because of the, the benefit of coming together in community for community media. I also want to say, for nearly twenty years, I've watched the extraordinary and unique manner in which NOM operates, building community, culture, economic development opportunities, and works enthusiastically to meet the needs of every single person and group that walks in their door with an idea, a project, or a creative spark. NOM, I don't think it's been mentioned yet, is a, along with Jeremy Whalen and the program at the school, an Emmy award-winning, thoughtful and inclusive kind of nonprofit that any community would be fortunate to call its own. We recently started a partnership with NOM that, that Hannah mentioned. She's placed at NOM for this year. NOM is a digital equity partner and leader within the Alliance, providing essential digital navigator and tech helper services, device distribution, and media leadership in the region. Working directly with Northampton nonprofits such as Forbes Library, the Center for New Americans, and the Northern Hilltown Council on Aging, amongst many, many others. And the reason that we wanted NOM to really host the digital navigator is we knew it was a community hub for the region. We knew that NOM would step up and take leadership across the region to make sure that this innovative work that was helping over eight thousand folks have been helped by our services in just the last fifteen months. We knew with NOM's help, we could reach thousands and thousands and more. So I urge you strongly to support the five percent full funding for NOM, the full capital funding of the non-capital budget. Please ensure that that funding is a flat figure, not tied to subscriber numbers. We know that cable funding for community media across the state has decreased in some places. In my station in Brookline was about by twenty-seven percent in one year, tremendous cuts. I know that for Northampton, that's been close to twenty percent. And that's a really important reason to look at additional funding and to look at a flat figure not tied to subscriber numbers. I just want to say, in two thousand and seventeen, when we had our hearing in Brookline, Comcast made our cable channels HD. So there's no reason that you guys can't get that negotiated as part of this negotiation here in Northampton. And, you know, we definitely need to be showing Eastermas up sometimes. So let's try to make sure that we get that. And I just want to thank everybody that I've heard from tonight because I didn't get to hear that always for my center. And it's so lovely to sit in the audience and hear this community, how strong you are, how many creators there are, and how, how much NOM has played an important role in your life. So thank you for sharing that.
Thanks, Kathy. Alexis.
Hi. So I just wanted to speak to some of the things, of course, that were brought up, talking about community building, but also barrier to access. So many folks that come in through our doors are from so many different walks of life. We have, you know, our, our young and aging black population, our young and aging LGBTQ population, our young and aging disabled and deaf population. These are all the folks that either interface with us, you know, digitally in some way or come into our doors. And because of that, they are then working together in some capacity. And so we're building community, you know, in this thing that's very, really not accessible in, in any other way, especially because Al made sure that it's free. There's so many access centers that still, the barrier to entry is still payment, is still financial. And so many of our youth are now deciding, you know, what is an alternative to college nowadays? And so many of those youth are coming into access stations to decide how they're going to, you know, how they're going to enter the workforce. And so I think that something that's really beautiful that we do is one is the community access piece around art, which is a privilege, right? So many of us want to be able to create art full-time, which is a privilege. You either have to, you know, get into a, some sort of school, which is a barrier to access, or you have to be born into it or something like that, right? And so this, like somebody else had said, this is in a way an equalizer. We are serving our houseless population exactly the same way that we are serving the folks that are already steeped in the dance, in acting, and, you know, performing arts community that has sort of built Northampton into what it is. And so I'm really asking you guys to really push for this funding because it's going to pay back for us so big as our community becomes more and more literate in this world because they want to feel involved. And, and you know, we're, we're more and more becoming digital, and so it's going to shut them out unless we really envelop them and bring them in. And this is the way that we can do that. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Alexis. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Yes, please.
It's great hearing this. My name's Robin Doty. I live over in Leeds, Massachusetts. And I have over forty years of experience in video. And I have to say that video fluency, which I'm seeing so much of going on here, is critical to what's going on nationally. I think we all know there are certain threats to communications in general right now, to PBS and NEPM. Those communications tools are under threat. Having people making things now that really they've learned how to speak in this language. This language is more than just picking up a cell phone and pointing at something. I'm sure all of you already know that and have learned how to speak in it. And it's really, really, really crucial. A while ago, I was devastated when I saw the Gazette building disappear, like overnight. It's communications. Where did that go? What's happening? So news, as newspapers dry up and die, this video fluency is crucial, absolutely crucial. And I really commend you all for all the work you're doing. It's a, it is a long, hard road. You got to stick to it. You're going to hit a lot of bumps, and I can assure you, some of those bumps are coming up real soon. So yeah, keep at it. The other thing about NOM, and I, you know, didn't know much about NOM initially. We've only been here since nineteen seventy-eight, so we're still a little young. I didn't know much about that NOM growing up, and I grew up a little bit in this community knowing about NOM. But, you know, I listened to a few city council meetings, and, you know, those are grueling in, in every way, shape, and form. But they're absolutely essential. This is the daylight on operations without that and using that as a reference for what did he say? When did he say it? You know, and it keeps people honest, too. A camera can do a lot of stuff to the people in front of it that it's looking at. So having all those meetings, God forbid anybody should ever watch all of them, but, I mean, it will kill you. But they're great. They're absolutely essential. They're like library books you put in, but you never know when you're going to need one, and you can pull it out. So it's essential for that to happen. So again, Al, my hat goes off to you if I had a hat. And you guys just are impressive. And I say you guys, even though I know you aren't exactly in that group, but great work. So NOM, Al, fantastic. And all this stuff, the money, yeah, you're going to get it.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like, please?
Hi there. My name is Sonia Bouvier. I'm the mother of one of the young people doing transcripts. My son was born here in Northampton. I wanted to make sure he went to school here. And I wanted him to grow up in a community that valued equity and access to information and freedom and democracy. And I, I feel like he's actually getting to live that now, which is a great thing. It has changed his life. It's been a passion that I've seen lit up in him. And I, I thank goodness for that. I really, really, really am grateful for that. The other thing I don't think I've heard said directly, but is that, you know, I am a Comcast Xfinity subscriber and have been for more years than I can count. And yes, I did cut the cable, but I also work remotely, and so I have like top-level Wi-Fi that I pay for. And so it's media. And I would think and hope that Comcast Xfinity would be thrilled to support an effort like this. I mean, why not? It's an award-winning nationwide leader. I would just ask for full funding, and I would ask for Comcast to think about the value that you're gaining from this community investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone on Zoom? I don't see any other hands. I want to thank everyone for your comments.
They're very, very greatly appreciated. Also, I want to thank Eileen Lady and Comcast for, for being here and here and as, as I always say, we are a passionate people. We experienced that from us tonight. And I also, you know, I want to thank Comcast for their continued partnership and for using a percent of their proceeds for community programming. I also want to appreciate the other community programs and contributions that Comcast makes. For example, the grant and the laptops to the Alliance for Digital Equity that happened in November that we heard Hannah and Kathy spoke about that. And I also want to thank them for their work with C-SPAN on student cam competition that are amazing. Northampton High School students have participated in and have won. Shout out to, of course, the transcription to Jeremy Whalen and just the remarkable work that you all do. We're incredibly proud. I also am just really happy to share my own perspective on the importance of local programming and the public and educational governmental access. NOM is, as you've heard tonight, is an incredible pillar of our community, whether it's events that bring the community together that Dave was specifically talking about, things like Panther Cinema, one of my personal favorites, as you've heard, the community use of equipment, the hundreds and hundreds of local government and community meetings that they cover and post. They are just absolutely critical for transparency and engagement in our community. And they are really a window onto our democracy, which is desperately needed more than ever. And it's often a window that's happening in real time, as so many of the meetings they, they cover and broadcast live. There's just, there's also been a tremendous increase in the amount of meetings that they upload and cover. And as now, almost all of our, our governmental meetings in our kitchen are hybrid and recorded. So there are definitely some weeks that I spend more evenings with NOM employees and they with me than we do with our families. And I'm, and they are lovely people to spend that time with, and I'm just super, super grateful to them. You know, I was the council president when the pandemic began, and I just can't say enough about the partnership that we have with NOM. Within a week of city buildings closing, we brought the city council on to Zoom, which now seems like nothing, but was an unbelievably huge lift that we did in just a matter of days. That's, in some of the meetings, I think they mentioned tonight, in the spring of twenty twenty, went past one o'clock, went into two, three. Dave is, is nodding because Dave was there with us the entire time during those meetings. And it's just, it's marvelous. And you, you heard from Hannah and Alexis and Emily, others, too, about how NOM really helps connect people. You know, during the pandemic, they also were an amazing resource and connected people with equipment to, with something we were all shut into our homes and didn't have access to outside world. They connected people with equipment. People who would have had no connection at that point because they didn't have that equipment and totally didn't know how to use it. And that is just an amazing, amazing thing that they did for our community and continue to do every day. You know, I really, I've seen that when needed, NOM absolutely says, and it's critical that it now just maintain the growth, their operational and their capital funding. I also want to stress the importance of maintaining a strong and fair license regarding all matters covered in the existing license that we have, including, you know, that of course I want to advocate for strong customer service and customer protection language, reasonable insurance indemnification, and availability of the company to report to and respond to the issuing authority in any event of any infrastructure or right-of-way management issues that we might have. The city also needs to have a side letter providing a senior citizen or older adult discount, as we currently have a side letter with our current license. So we, we absolutely need to continue that. The city's position is that we do not want anything less than we have under our existing license regarding all the categories that are covered in the existing license. And, you know, in light of the increased importance of, of this media and, and this access into our community. So thank you, thank you. And I don't know if there's anything you want to say to close out.
I'd just say thank you for everybody for coming out. We don't usually get this type of participation at public hearings, so it's great to hear from people. And I've seen the great work that Al does at Northampton Media and the great work from that Jeremy does with C-SPAN in that we have the privilege of going and seeing these videos that he makes and seeing these classrooms. And it's one of my favorite things to do, and I look forward to when I, every year, there's going to be a winner and we're going to be a part. We're going to be there to see it. So, and we just enjoy the partnership, and I look forward to working with the community and with Bill on this upcoming renewal. And I think we're going to, it'll be great. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for working with us. And thank you, everyone. Thank you for your strong enthusiastic testimony. And I look forward to working with Comcast, and I thank them again for carrying our needs and requests. And so thank you, everyone, for being here.